Okay, so at 6:32 I'd like to call the meeting to order. I don't have any additions or deletions to the agenda. And so at 1.3 approval of the minutes. I assume that everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes. If someone has not, please let me know. So about the only change that I have, and to be honest with you, Beth, this is at your discretion, whether or not you even want to update the minutes on this because it's, I think, a bit of a nitpick. But in reading the decision or the comments on Campbell Farm, the use of occupancy permit was not consistent. In some cases, it was a permit for occupancy. In other cases, it was occupancy permit where the O was capitalized and the P was not. So if you just want to, if you want to clean it up, fine. If you have better things to do with your time, don't bother. It's not that important. Does anyone else have any comments on the minutes from the February 14th meeting? If not, could I entertain a motion to approve?
移到
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Carol, how do you vote?
Do I abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting?
You could abstain, but let me go backwards for a second. I'm sorry to do this. But since we have four of our board members here and we have our associate board member, I would like to go ahead and have Ian appointed as a voting board member. So with that, do you have any comments on the minutes, Ian?
Negative.
Okay, so Carol abstains. Julie, how do you vote in terms of approving the minutes?
Yes.
I do yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. So the minutes are approved. Okay, so let's move on to 2.1, review proposed zoning bylaw amendments for placement on the ATM warrant deadline, March 1st. Do you want to put those up, Beth, or how do we want to do this?
I figured you could just talk about them. There's really no changes from the last time we put them up. So I think
Okay, so what are the zoning bylaw amendments was for the Roosters? Or the Fowl?
Yeah, 14526B.
And then the other one was what Bill Cadigan had recommended in terms of dog grooming.
Right, so I guess the only thing I didn't get confirmation on is the other dog-related, you know, uses that would, you know, you would like to have in the amendment. So these are, you know, I know that dog training was brought up. I could add that in. And then the other one was dog daycare. So do, does the board want me to go ahead and add those two? So there would be three altogether?
So do I have a motion to add dog sitting and dog training to the amendment that we're making?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes.
Okay, I mean, you can always, yeah. So if there's any other terms you want in there, you just let me know. If anybody's thought of anything or
Okay, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but Adam reviewed, because we discussed it at our last meeting, the foul amendment.
He did.
Has he had a chance to review the, let me say, the puppy amendment?
No, so would you like me to send that off?
Yeah. And have him review that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on 2.1? So if not, 2.2, an update on public hearings for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments?
Yeah, I do have the, we have that for April 11th. So I hope everyone has it on their calendar. Both the bylaw amendments will be held during that public hearing. And I do have the Zoom link. I'm writing up the legal notices probably tomorrow. I'll probably have them done tomorrow. But yeah, so it's coming up. And then as soon as those legal notices are, you know, are available, we'll, I'll publish them and we'll go from there.
Okay, so I believe that we've already discussed 2.3 and 2.4 with regards to those two amendments?
Yep.
So do you have any updates on the safe routes to schools, Carol?
I haven't really done much. I was on a Safe First to School webinar and it was kind of interesting that they brought up the towns are responsible for any costs associated with right-of-ways. But that's all part of their, when you get a grant, they do this whole process and they'll give you what the cost is of obtaining a right-of-ways. I do have to get with Rachel, I know, and Emmy, because Rachel sent Emmy an email about whether the recreation department wants to join as a school alliance partner. And she was supposed to meet with the principals. So I have to follow up with Rachel to see if she actually met with the principals.
Okay.
And that's about it.
All right, thank you, Carol. Does any board, does anyone have any questions for Carol?
Maybe.
If not, yes, I'm sorry, Ian, go ahead.
No, I said no, I said no.
Okay, all right. So update on the Canal Street, Elm Street intersection analysis. And that's Mike. Hi, Mike.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time. I just wanted to give you all an update. We had a preliminary meeting about that since the last planning board meeting, where we had a discussion about it, about different pathways that we could go forward with. It's definitely a priority area to kind of look at because of the high use and the traffic issues. We're looking at proposals. I've also been reaching out to the highway department, the Mass DOT, because they have access to the road right away, trying to coordinate. Like I said, we sat down and we met with the folks who did the street and sidewalk assessment and are talking about initial plans. We haven't decided on anything yet, but there are a couple of different proposals we're considering. It's just kind of, I just wanted to give an ongoing update. And that's, we're continuing that discussion for you guys, for sure.
Thank you so much for the update, Mike. Does anyone
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not very I know, I know you guys had some specific questions and things that I wanted to address. Like I see, I think somebody has their hand up.
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine, Cindy.
Okay, yeah, I'm a kind of an immediate abutter to that intersection. And as you're moving forward, I mean, it scares me, the proposals that were in that initial MRPC evaluation is pretty frightening for those of us that live right here. And I mean, I'm just asking that as you, before you go too far forward with this, if you could involve us, the abutters to that intersection. I've lived here for 40 years and there's a couple other families that have lived here longer than me. So we kind of know the accidents, we know the traffic patterns, we know kind of what happens. And what, you know, and some of us, we know how to live, we know how to get through that intersection safely. And I know that people that don't have some issues. But I think it would be good if you could involve the neighbors so that we could be part of the conversation before the worst nightmare is the rotary idea. But if, if you could just kind of include us, I think we'd really appreciate some input. And feeling more comfortable that there is some input or rather than we're just going to wake up one day and you guys decided what's going to happen. That's all, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes, Mike.
All right, I just, yeah, I'm respecting the room I'm in. So Cindy, thank you for reaching out and sharing that. So we are definitely, that's something that is a big priority. We're having, we're still, that's why we're having these preliminary discussions. And the, the report that you were talking about had several different proposals for that intersection that were, they basically gave us a suite of options. So not one decision is being done. We're not like going to do everything all at once. But I would say though, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind reaching out to me? Maybe tomorrow or even later tonight? And I can connect with you more that way. And that way I can make sure that I'm keeping you in the loop and serving, you know, you can help make sure that other local advocates are in the route as well.
Sure, I'll do that, but probably tomorrow.
Yeah, of course. So you can, my, my information is on the website as the land use coordinator. Or you can just reach out to me at the office. My extension is 1723 if you just call the town hall. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But this is, this is 100% why I wanted to be here today and talk about this a little bit. Is because this is something that we want to make sure that we're getting lots of oversight as we go forward. So thanks Lance for letting me come in and talk about it again. I know it's not
Oh, you're more than welcome.
A hugely substantive update, but I feel like it's the kind of thing that you guys should be made aware of every little increment along the way.
Yeah, and I really appreciate it because I've always had the objective as being a transparent board.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or anything like that I can help with?
Any other questions for Mike?
Awesome.
Okay, all right, 2.7 Townsend master plan. So I'm working on that. Unfortunately, I've had some personal issues with my mother as well as some work-related issues. So bear with me. I have it as one of my high priorities. All right, 2.8. So before we get into 2.8, I don't know if all of you've had an opportunity to meet Vinnie, but Vinnie has joined us and is responsible for grant writing. And so Vinnie, why don't I give you a second to just introduce yourself?
Okay, yeah, hi, Vinnie DeSalvo. And I just started in January for the town. Trying to get up to speed on MVP and see what options are out there for seeking some funding for, for different projects. My biggest thing is trying to, you know, ascertain what the priorities are, you know, and then, you know, kind of get my marching orders from folks like you and the town for which direction to try to seek, you know, funding for, for what particular projects. I believe in the past we, we put in for a couple, a couple of MVP action grants that weren't awarded. Is that correct?
I'll let, so I'll let Beth, Beth is the expert on that because as well as being responsible for the planning board and the, gosh, zoning board of a variance or appeals, she's also was our grant writer. Sure, so she's had quite a long history with the MVPs. So Beth?
Yeah, no, we did have two, Vinnie, that were not awarded. And I saw your email, you asked about why. And we did get feedback from the state each time. So I do have all that information to go over with you. But at this point, we have, after the second grant was basically declined, there hasn't been a lot of activity since. So we really had to buckle down and other things were on the front burner. So
And I'm only asking because I'm, so what I'm trying to determine is, do we want to revisit those again with, you know, if they were the priorities once? Are they still the priorities? I went back and looked through the actual MVP plan and, you know, at everything that was listed as high, high priorities. And, you know, I saw a couple, because I was on the phone today with the coordinator for Central Mass for the green communities. And we seem to be, you know, in their good graces. We have our third grant that's finishing up with them. If we can finish that one up by the end of September, then there's a couple of MVP kind of related, well, at least, you know, projects that were cited in the MVP plan, including like study the feasibility of solar panel installations on town buildings, parking lot at the high school and behind the library. Those are, that might be one that we could, you know, submit through green communities as opposed to an MVP action grant. It seems like that's, they're kind of tough to crack. So that might be an option. And then the, and this will have to be my, you know, I'm going to have to live and die on getting the town a, an electric vehicle charger. I've heard that from a lot of people. That's listed on your plan as, as a high priority. And again, there's, you know, a few options for, that we can hopefully put in for, for that. But again, I'm looking, you know, for input on, you know, what types of prioritized projects we're talking about.
Yeah, and Vinnie, I just want to let you know that the master plan, consider it to be draft. There will be changes.
Sure.
Chaz, do you want to add anything?
As, as a core team member of the vulnerability group, I think there's a lot of pieces with that, Vinnie, that you and I kind of briefly touched upon the last time we talked. I think the water department has some of that involved too. So I believe that the more we collaborate with the different departments, I know that the infrastructure bill has some pieces of it too that we could probably use for. So the, the two grants, Beth, can you remind me the last time that we did that? Wasn't that just one piece that we went for, for a grant?
What do you mean, one piece?
There was just one thing that we were looking for?
Oh, it was sustainability of water quality and resiliency, climate resilience, water quality studies.
Right, so we were, we were looking, instead of looking at the, all of the pieces, we were trying to focus on one or two at a time.
Yeah, for, yeah, under guidance from the state.
Yeah, yeah.
And Vinnie has a
Anything else, Vinnie?
Excuse me?
I said anything else?
No, that's about it, you know, but I'll definitely
Well, I just, I just wanted to personally really welcome you to our team and it's great to have you.
Well, thank you, yeah. And I'm, you know, please feel free to poke me, you know, let me know what I can do for you guys. I'm learning this job as I'm doing it. I just sent off my first grant today, so I'm on a high.
Yay!
Okay, well, good job.
Thank you.
All right, so just a reminder, annual town election is April the 25th and our annual town meeting is May the 3rd. And so Beth, are you able to read the notices from Townsend and other towns?
Yep, I haven't got it pulled up right now though, but let me do that.
Okay.
Just take me a moment.
So Chaz, are you at home or are you at work?
I'm at home.
I'm sorry, Beth, I should have given you a heads up.
That's okay. So, all right. So there is a letter from the building commissioner. I'll let you each read that individually because that's more internal. 22 Main Street. There's a legal notice from Townsend, basically, from us. This is for us, the planning board, holding a meeting Monday, March 14th. I think I already told you about this. Sorry, yeah. There is an update in the folders on the Campbell Farm conservation restriction, the process of where that is. I put that in your correspondence file because it came, you know, from the conservation commission. They're just trying to keep us updated as to where that is in the process. And again, that's in your folder and there is
And so, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but my understanding is that the EEA of the state of Massachusetts is planning to sign the conservation restriction tomorrow.
That's right. And then it's ready for recording by the applicant.
Yeah, we were all there on last Thursday. So it was the board of selectmen and the trustees. We all signed and notarized. Thank you, Lori, for helping us out with that. And it went on and it's supposed to be signed tomorrow, from what I hear.
They also put the planning board decision from 187199 North End Road in the folder. There's a notice of decision there and a transmittal memo and a decision that Chairman McNally signed this morning and it went to the town clerk today. And it's on the 20-day appeal today, as of today. And as you know, as you, who, those of you who are there, that application, the request modification was denied. A legal notice has been posted by the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, March 30th. This is a case where it's 169 Wallace Hill Road. And they are applying for, it's a single-family residence, but there was a pre-existing accessory apartment. So they are applying now for approval to use it as an accessory apartment. It's been sold and the new owners are trying to get a special permit for that use. And that is again on March 30th at 545. And that's Townsend notices. Other towns, we have Town of Pepperell's ZBA. There's going to be a special permit, a public hearing for a special permit. Zoning Board of Appeals, I said that already. That's an accessory apartment located above an attached two-car garage. That is a public hearing to be held on March 16th at 7:00 PM. There's a notice of decision from the Town of Pepperell Board of, Zoning Board of Appeals that is for a variance of 31.7 feet from the required 50-foot front yard setback for the property located at 11 Sartell Street. The Town of Shirley Planning Board is going to conduct a public hearing at 6 o'clock, Wednesday, March 23rd. And that is for a special permit to seek relief from the protective zoning bylaw relating to use and a site plan review per section seven of the zoning bylaw. It's at 65, the property is 65 Front Street. And a couple of more notices from the Town of Shirley, two legal notices from the ZBA in Shirley. A public hearing Monday, April 4th for a variance, applicant is requesting a variance from the zoning bylaw relating to side yard setbacks. And that is at 3 Valley View Way. And I don't, for some reason, do not see the time on that one. Oh yeah, I do, 6:00 PM. Again, from the Town of Shirley, ZBA, a public hearing at 6 o'clock, Monday, April 4th. Interestingly enough, it's the same time as the other one. So I'm not sure if this was just a duplicate notice, but it is in your file. So one more here from the Town of Pepperell, who got some pretty cool fancy new postcards that they're sending instead of envelopes and sheets of paper. But they're basically holding a public hearing for a minor site plan review for 116 Main Street, Domino's Pizza. And it is located in the Commercial Learning District. That is going to be on February 28th. I'm sorry, not February 28th, March 7th at 7:00 PM. And that's it.
So I mean, so they send their notices out on these little fancy postcards?
Yeah, it's very nice.
Doesn't it cost, doesn't it cost less to mail a postcard than a regular letter?
It does, it's 40 cents and you don't have to buy envelopes. So that's kind of nice.
Yeah, you should show that, all right, you should show that to Mike then.
Yes, definitely.
Maybe we can get our own fancy postcards.
Yeah, very convenient, I like that, okay.
It was like a killer to read, it was, it was a killer to read. I don't know if it was the printer or, or the way it was scanned too, but my eyes were watery at the end of, of reading the thing. But yeah, it's a comment.
No, I understand, Ian, that was, it was because the postcard was on green and when I put it on the scanner, it didn't reproduce well. So yeah, that, that is, we would probably want to use white.
Okay, sorry about that, Ian. Mike, you have your hand up?
I do. Beth had asked me to put something in the Townsend correspondence and I wasn't able to put it in that folder, but I was able to put it in the main folder. Beth, are you able to see it in the main folder, like one level up?
Let me check, so you weren't able to get it in there, okay?
Not enough, like I could get into the share drive, but not into the folders.
So what do you mean by the main folder?
So there is the, under the planning board, 3.0 correspondence. There's a folder that one, has two subfolders, one for other towns, one for Townsend. And I wasn't getting, eager to get into the Townsend or the other towns, but I was able to get into that 3.0 correspondence.
And do you, do you have some correspondence that you want to just share with us, Mike?
Beth had wanted me, Beth had recommended that I come and talk a little about the D L T A letter. The, we're sending out a letter requesting technical assistance from the D L T A grant regarding the Townsend's working with the multifamily housing program. And I'm going to be briefing it tomorrow, briefing the committee tomorrow about it, the board of selectmen. And then they're going to be signing the letter tomorrow. So I have the draft letter in there, which I can share with you if you'd like. But it's the request for technical assistance regarding the feasibility of multifamily housing in Townsend as a town that is septic. And this is the district local technical assistance, this is the D L T A. In case I didn't think I included that. But that was something the planning board had asked me to look into and we had already been working on it. So I'm happy to share, Beth asked me just if I wouldn't mind coming and sharing. Like I said, we're going to be, this is, it's a draft letter because it's going to be signed by the board and the board has the ability to make revisions before they sign it tomorrow. But I can even come back after it's signed and give you a full update on that if you'd like. And I know I talked to Lance about coming back at some point and talking a little bit more about the MBTA community's legislation that was passed and what Townsend is doing under that legislation.
Any questions for Mike on that? I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think, I think what motivated it was a letter from Shirley that went to MRPC asking for their assistance. And they were a MBTA community and we're an adjacent MBTA community. So it needed to be modified a little bit, but basically asking for their support and helping us move forward with this. Did I categorize that all right, Mike?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know I haven't given a full briefing to everyone on the board about the MBTA community's legislation that we're talking about. And I will come back and do that for sure, whenever time is convenient for the board. But there is basically technical assistance, money to help with feasibility studies and things like that. And so we're taking advantage of that opportunity. But the proposals were called for, I think it was late January when they finally announced that they were available, maybe even the beginning of February. And they're due March 1st at midnight. So I will be pitching this like letter to the board of selectmen tomorrow, which is March 1st. But we're certainly going to finish the meeting before midnight and then I just have to go scan it and send it off. So I got plenty of time. But it's one of the reasons, normally I would have come and given you like a lot of lead time, like, hey, two months out, this is what we're talking about, yada, yada, yada. You guys had already been talking about it, which was good, made me feel a little bit better. Normally I would not be like, hey, we're signing a thing that, you know, in less than a month. Because I, but it was just they, that we were not communicated when we were hoping to, the availability of this technical assistance. And so we wanted to take advantage of it.
Just don't print it on green paper.
That noted, I'm writing that down. That's good. I'll put my hand down, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Mike, for your, your support. All right, so our next planning board meeting is on March the 14th. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Before we adjourn, I um, I will not be here on the 14th unless-
Okay.
I just can't leave, but um, and normally I would be on Zoom, but I'm supposed to be in the air at the time of the meeting. So I'm just letting you know ahead of time, okay?
Okay, thank you, Lori. Um, so, all right, um, is motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes, okay. Everyone have yourself a wonderful evening and once again, Vinnie, thank you so much for coming to this meeting.